City Plenary should like to call roll.
Certainly. Chairman Morrissey.
Here.
Vice Chair Malick.
Present.
Commissioner Rosales.
Present.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
And Commissioner Ogden.
Present.
Please let the record show that the full membership of the Planning Commission is present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Mary Sue, do we have any matters not on the agenda tonight?
Chair Morrissey, we do not.
Thank you. If we could approve the minutes of the prior meeting, if I could get a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please vote.
Let the record show that the motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I see no issues on the consent calendar nor the transportation items, so we'll go right into public hearings. And the first item is I am going to recuse myself because I have a residence within 1,000 feet. So I'm going to turn this over to...
Vice Chair Malick.
Mr. Malick here. There you go, buddy.
Thank you. So we are looking at the recommendation for consideration of a regular coastal permit, RC 24-00007, to allow for demolition of existing 3,899 square foot, single-family home and construction of a new 4,026 square foot, single-family home with an attached garage at 1934 South Pacific Street. The Goldman residence, applicant is Joshua and Lindsay Goldman. Staff?
Disclosure.
Oh, disclosures. Could you guys? You want to start? Thank you.
Read the staff report, familiar with the area, and I did go by the area.
Staff report and familiar with the area.
Same for my staff report and familiar with the area.
We reviewed the staff report and also walked the area, the two projects.
Staff report and familiar with the area.
And myself, I reviewed the staff report. I'm very familiar with there. I live in the area, so thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Weedman with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting item number four tonight. The project site at 1934 South Pacific Street has an existing, single-family home with an attached garage that was constructed in 1948. The site falls on the east side of Pacific Street, south of Cassidy and north of E. The subject site is designated residential low density by the local coastal program and has a zoning designation of single-family residential, denoted by R1 on the screen. Properties to the north, south, and west are also zoned, single-family residential, whereas properties to the east are zoned, medium-density residential, as seen in the figure on the screen. The applicant is requesting a regular coastal permit to demolish the existing, single-family residence and construct a new 4,026 square foot, single-family residence with an attached garage and covered outdoor space. The image on the screen shows the site plan with the blue outline denoting where the roof will extend to. The image on the screen shows the west-facing elevation of the proposed, single-family residence. So that would be the view from South Pacific. The maximum height limit of 35 feet is shown by the red line on the screen, and the proposed height of the structure is 25 feet. The image on the screen shows the south-facing elevation of the proposed residence. The applicant's request for a regular coastal permit is consistent with the goals and objectives of the local coastal program and complies with the zoning ordinance in the following ways. One, per the local coastal program, the project adheres to height and scale requirements and is architecturally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And two, per the zoning ordinance, the project complies with all R1 development standards. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolution number 2025-P06, approving the project as... That concludes my presentation for 1934 South Pacific. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant has a short presentation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tim Martin. I'm the architect who has designed this project for Josh and Lindsay Goldman. I don't really have a lot additional to say. Nicole's done a good job, and her staff report is very thorough. I do have a few slides that I could show. When we were kind of revisiting our presentation a couple of weeks back and looking at our submittal, we were recognizing that our sections didn't really show that this pad was so far elevated above Pacific. So I did include a couple of site sections to show that, but I think you're all familiar with that anyway. In addition to that, we did a couple of perspective renderings, but other than that, I don't have much more to offer. I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Let's see the renderings. See your work.
Thank you.
You able to show those?
Vice Chair Malick, they're seemingly trying to resolve a technical issue of where the file may be located, so bear with us and apologize for the inconvenience.
We've got a couple of minutes. That's fine.
Interesting house, huh?
Yeah, it is.
I like the 10-foot on the first floor. It's a half-inch. Still relevant in the height.
The applicant's presentation was accidentally deleted from the drive, so he is fine not presenting anything. I apologize for the inconvenience.
We can just imagine what it looks like.
We did get some elevations. Thank you, looks great. Any questions for me?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments?
We have no speaker slips requested for this chair.
Get a motion?
Yeah, seeing nobody come forward to speak on this item from the public. This seems pretty straightforward, and sorry, we can't see the images. We'll just wait until it gets constructed, and then we'll go check it out. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second?
Second.
With that, the motion to approve?
Let the record show that the motion passes 6-0 with Commissioner or Chair Morrissey abstaining.
Look forward to seeing it. Thank you. Wait for Chairman Morrissey to rejoin us, and then we'll continue.
The next item on the agenda is number five. The remodel of an existing, single-family residence to include an interior remodel, exterior material updates, addition of two dormers, window relocation, garage and driveway expansion, and repair of exterior balconies at the property located at 1121 South Pacific Street. Disclosures, I'm familiar with the site and perused the materials.
Staff report and I'm familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogden. Thank you.
Staff report and visited the site.
Commissioner Dodds?
Read the staff report. I'm familiar with the site, and I also did visit the site.
Staff report and familiar with the area.
Staff report, familiar with the area, and drove by the site.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I am Lydia Greggo with the Planning Division and here to present a request for a coastal permit by OBH LLC. The applicant is requesting a regular coastal permit for the remodel of an existing, three-level, single-family residence to include an interior remodel, exterior material updates, addition of two dormers, window relocation, garage and driveway expansion, and repair of exterior balcony and deck at the property located at 1121 South Pacific Street. The project site is a 6,500-square-foot lot located within the Townsite neighborhood. The site is currently developed with a 4,200-square-foot, single-family residence. It is bordered by the Pacific Ocean to the west and both, single- and multifamily residences to the northeast and south. The site is designated Mixed High Density and Transient Residential by the general plan, Mixed High Density and Transient Residential by the city's local coastal program land use plan, and is located within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. The property has a zoning designation of Residential Tourist, or RT. The proposed project would include the interior remodel and exterior improvements of an existing, single-family residence. Interior alterations include converting existing living space to garage space. On the exterior, an enlarged driveway is proposed while still providing sufficient space for street parking. To address the deterioration of the exterior of the building, the applicant proposes to rebuild the deck and balcony at the back of the home, re-roof the home, and refinish the entire exterior of the building with new siding and stucco. No increase in habitable square footages or changes to the building height will occur. The interior remodel includes refined floor plans, updated finishes, a new HVAC system and electrical system improvements. On the street level, the kitchen will be relocated from the east to the west of the home in order to accommodate the expansion of the existing, one-car garage to a two-car garage. The proposed elevations depict an updated color scheme with composition shingles, stucco, shiplapp siding, board and batten siding, a new garage door. In addition, the applicant proposes the installation of new, energy-efficient windows, replacing and relocating the existing metal panels. These simplified window elements are proposed throughout the elevations to match interior remodel location. Additional improvements include the removal of the existing, damaged chimney and the addition of two dormers on the west elevation. Updates to exterior materials will replace existing deteriorated conditions, increasing the home's resilience from coastal exposure. These improvements will also provide contemporary features, such as the installation of a glass railing at the street-level balcony, large sliding glass doors, and a cohesive color palette that blends harmoniously with the surrounding environment. Approval of a coastal permit is subject to the conformance with the general plan, the coastal program, and compliance with the zoning ordinance. The project is consistent with the general plan land use policies to promote quality architectural design and enhance visual quality of the neighborhood. The project is found consistent with the land use plan of the local coastal program in that the project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of design and would have no impact on coastal resources. And furthermore, the project would comply with all required development standards of the RT district in accordance with Article 10C of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirm issuance of the Class 1 categorical exemption for existing facilities and approve regular coastal permit RC 24-05 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution number 2025-P07 with findings and recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance this evening, and we are both available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I see no questions. So would the applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
Hi. Very briefly, my name is Patrick Edeter. I'm the architect. And I don't know if you all know backstory. Brief, two years ago, this entire house got... Totally got shot down. And basically, the chimney that's not there anymore. We feel like we're trying to put it all back together. The applicant itself battled the insurance a couple of years now, just trying to settle. So other than that, just by way of...
Thank you. Mary Sue, do we have any public requests to speak?
Chair Morrissey, no. There are no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, let's take it back to the commission. Any questions? Any comments? Yeah, well, they're not here. So...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ogden.
Baby, this is a question for you, Barbara. We're looking at the Surf Rider Foundation letter that was handed to us when we first got here.
Michael, can you speak into your mic, please? Thank you.
I didn't get a copy of that. Dated March 24th. And it, my question is... The Coastal Commission interprets, this is paragraph two of page two. "The Coastal Commission interprets any existing structure that exceeds cumulative redevelopment of 50% to be considered a new development." Can anybody give me some feedback on that?
Certainly, Commissioner Ogden. So in this instance, we don't have any expansion beyond the existing square footage. There's no habitable space being added to it. There's some reconfiguration of the interior of the home, and there's some replacement of windows, repair and replacement of balconies, a small expansion of a non-habitable garage. So I would offer that this does not represent 50% redevelopment despite what the assertion is made here in the Surf Rider Foundation letter.
It just seems like it's going to be a remodel of that area.
That's exactly right.
In an area that needs considerable work. I mean, it's horrible, so...
Well, we just heard from the applicant that a tenant...
Thank you.
Disrepaired the house, so yes.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Item number six is the consideration of a zone amendment amending Articles 4, 11, 13, and 36 of the Oceanside zoning ordinance and Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code, storefront retail cannabis zoning and city code amendment. And applicant is the City of Oceanside. Thank you, Dane.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Dane Thompson with Planning Division presenting the storefront cannabis retail, AKA dispensary program. Votements tonight. Staff recommends that the commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and city code for the establishment and operation of storefront cannabis facilities. The city first established a cannabis program in 2018, where the city council voted to allow medicinal-only cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing lab uses. Shortly thereafter, the city council offered two licenses for non-storefront delivery. And in 2020, the city council removed the medical-only restriction for cultivation uses to later remove the medical-only restriction for the balance of cannabis use. In April 2023, the city council directed staff to develop a program allowing up to storefront licenses. Staff returned to the city council in November of 2023 after creating a rough program framework or outline which the city council provided high-level direction. After that, staff worked with our new cannabis consultant to create a draft storefront program. We brought that back to city council in February 2025, so last month, where the council provided final direction. Last month, the city council made motions on each of the following items. Some of the items listed here are outside the purview of the Planning Commission and will therefore be left out of the presentation as well as the recommendation. Tonight's recommendation includes just the zoning ordinance and city code. Here's a snapshot of the licenses issued as of today. Of the 20 licenses issued, five of them are active, and those are held between two companies. As proposed, those two companies are slated to get the right of first refusal for two of those four storefront cannabis licenses. This table shows the existing cannabis business taxes for cannabis uses. As established today, retail is subject to a 5% tax rate on groceries. That is in addition to the city's sales taxes. The city council can modify that tax to a minimum of 2% or a maximum of 6%. But beyond those limits, it would have to go back to a vote of people. The main purposes of tonight's proposed code amendments are to revise the zoning code to allow storefronts in specific commercial and industrial districts, revise the city code to cap the number of storefront licenses at four, institute deadlines for all licenses to become operational, and place restrictions on transfers of ownership of local licenses. The proposed code amendments would modify Articles 4, 11, 13, and 36 of the zoning ordinance as well as Chapter 7, Article 13 of the city code. Article 4 of the zoning code would be updated to have a definition for storefront retailers. Drive-through, drive-up, and curbside delivery services would be restricted citywide for all dispensary. Article 11 of the zoning code would be updated to add storefront cannabis retailers to the permitted use matrix, allowing them in the neighborhood commercial, community commercial, general commercial, limited commercial, special commercial, highway-oriented, and special commercial, limited districts. A limitation was included to preclude storefronts in the commercial village area of the San Luis Rey Mission Historic District, which is this little area, as you can see here on this map, outlined in red. The other four commercial districts shown, commercial shopping centers shown there are slated to be included for allowing storefront retail. Article 13 of the zoning code would be modified to allow the use in the limited industrial and general industrial districts. And then the permitted use matrix would also be updated to exclude any new, non-storefront retailer. Here's the map, which visually depicts what I just said about the proposed allowable districts. Blue shows commercial districts and purple, the industrial district. Storefronts would not be allowed in the coastal zone, the downtown, or in any site governed by a master plan like Ocean Ranch or Ranchville Orlo. Article 36 of the zoning code would be modified to clarify that storefronts are subject to the same 1,000-foot buffer requirements as other cannabis uses. And lastly, Chapter 7 of the city code would be modified to set a cap of four storefront licenses, eliminate two delivery licenses that are currently allowed, restrict transfers of ownership interest prior to the fourth year of operation, and institute deadlines to become operational. Those deadlines are 12 months to get a CUP from license issuance, and then an additional 18 months from CUP issuance to begin operations. From a land use planning perspective, the principal concerns with allowing storefront retailers are operational standards and buffering. Not much was proposed to change in the code regarding operational standards because the main items are already prescribed by the state code, including restricting hours of operation to 10:00 p.m., requiring security cameras at all entrances and exits, as well as both the customer and the employee side of the point-of-sale area, requiring a security guard during hours of operation, and verifying the age of customers. The city code also has adopted standards for all cannabis businesses, which would extend to storefronts, including ensuring odors do not extend past the property lines, requiring armed security guards 24/7, banning cannabis businesses from holding cash overnight, precluding cannabis-specific signage, and allowing the police department direct access to the surveillance cameras. Of course, additional context-based requirements could be added in the conditional use permit process. As proposed, most commercial and industrial districts are slated to allow storefront retailers. This was a conscious decision made by staff because of the city's unique ability to review a site's location for land use compatibility two separate times, as made possible by the dual licensing program. Location would be reviewed in the administrative local license process in an objective manner, measured by most direct path, which would result in varying levels of point deductions, disqualifying those applications with poor locations. By setting these objective locational criteria, applicants would be able to self-score their applications and screen out poor locations from ever submitting for a local license. As a regulated use, storefront retailers would be subject to the 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive and regulated uses. from sensitive and regulated uses. Because the distance is measured as the crow flies, very few sites across the city would meet those buffers, requiring them to request a waiver. Applicants must then justify why that waiver is warranted, and it is up to the discretion of the city council to approve or deny that request. Staff finds that the proposed amendments are exempt from CEQA review through the common sense exemption, which states that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and individual projects will need to undergo environmental review during the CUP process. In summary, staff recommends allowing storefronts in most commercial and industrial districts due to the rigorous two-part location review process. Staff recommends capping the number of allowable storefront licenses to a maximum of four, consistent with city council direction. And staff recommends instituting various safeguards to protect the integrity of the cannabis program in the city code. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of the zoning ordinance and city code amendments and confirm issuance of a common sense exemption per CEQA. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Vice Chair Malick.
Hey, Dane. I got a couple of questions. How you doing tonight? Looking at the presentation you had, it looks like a 5% additional tax on top of sales tax. How does that compare to other cities, coastal cities? Do you know?
Vice Chair Malick, I don't know off the top of my head other cities' taxes. I believe Vista is 7%. I've seen some lower, about 4%, maybe I want to say that's La Mesa. But typically, they're within the, say, 4% to 7% range.
Okay. And then you said there's nothing allowed in the coastal zone, but when we look at page four, there's a couple of blue lines down there with recommended commercial districts that appear to be along Coast Highway, at least on the handout that we were given, the read-ahead. Is that the case?
That is correct. There are some split-zone sites and some other areas that are west of Five that are actually outside of the coastal zone.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that is when we look at some of the locations that you've looked at, they're kind of inland, kind of along areas, and in some of the areas, if you're familiar with them, they're not always in the best developed part of town where you've got a lot of other activities that are going on that are probably illicit. And then we look south to our neighbors, further south in Encinitas. We're just open to two dispensaries in the downtown district along Coast Highway. So I was just curious if we're not allowing that, but we have some of that in the coastal zone. Where exactly is that? Because when you're looking at that, it's kind of, how do you, what kind of a clientele are you looking at? Where are they coming from? What are they going to? If you make it more mainstream, maybe it's less of an impact, just a perspective. But in that coastal zone where those two small lines are, where in terms of location are we talking about?
So one that I can see right here is at Oceanside Boulevard and Coast Highway. There's a Baskin Robbins.
Yep.
And an L and L barbecue. Basically, the back half of that, it's a split-zoned center. The back half of that is outside of the coastal zone. There's a few other sites, like I believe Primos on Moore Street might be outside of the coastal zone. Staff wasn't too concerned about adding those in the allowable districts because they would already be excluded.
Okay.
Given their proximity to sensitive uses like residential uses and school.
Thanks. Yeah, my point was really about how do we compare to other cities? And what are some of the other municipalities doing in regard to this? So that's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Ogden.
Nice job on the presentation.
Thank you.
Very. I have a couple of questions. Number one is, are the footage requirements separation consistent with state law, or are they separate from state law?
Commissioner Ogden, they are separate. So the state code requires a 6-foot, 600-foot buffer from a few different uses. I believe schools and youth centers. There are other notable absences, like residential districts. The state law says that the city can override that and create additional buffers or even smaller buffers if they consciously decide to do that.
And the city decided to do that, correct? I assume.
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Okay. All right. I was just confused with that. And then the next question is, walk me through the selection process. So do I have to pick a site? Do I have to have a site as I apply?
Yes. So you submit an application as an applicant. Your application will be scored based on three main areas.
Right.
One is a business plan. So will you be a functional business? Will you be solvent? Do you have the funds to start up a business?
Right.
The other third is community benefits. It is pretty common for cities that allow cannabis uses to require applicants to provide community benefits, whether that's direct cash transfers to nonprofits or other city-based initiatives. And then another third, the last third of the score would come from location.
So is it an effort to put certain ones in certain locations and disallow those? Is it, I mean, you don't all put them in one area? Is that correct? The reason I'm asking the question is because my experience has been it's very expensive to tie up a piece of property or to buy a piece of property without having being selected to do that. And it just seems to me that that gives an advantage to somebody who has got a lot of money to be able to do that. That's just my take on that. And I don't know if it would be possible to not have that site selected as part of the selection process, but there's certainly some safeguards as a result of that. Maybe there's some time constraints put on it or whatever. It's going to have to get a CUP anyway, correct, as far as that location is concerned? That just seems to me to be a little bit unfair. That's in my opinion, so.
So Commissioner Ogden, if I may add a few comments to your statements there and concerns expressed. So first of all, tonight, we're not asking the Planning Commission to make any recommendations on the evaluation criteria. That's directions staff already received from council. Secondly, staff takes the site criteria, site location criteria, very seriously. We're trying to do our best to balance the needs of the retail community to propose these storefront locations with protecting sensitive land uses such as schools, daycares, places of worship, and those kinds of things. So it's an important evaluation criteria with respect to considering applications received. And so it's going to be a commitment on the applicant's part to find the right spot that scores the best, that's furthest away from these sensitive land uses that the city's trying so hard to protect. So that's the discretion that the city council has. They gave staff direction. That's what we presented to them. That's what we worked with our consultants to create. Tonight, we're just asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on the proposed land use changes.
Okay. And I assume that that location is obviously very important, obviously, too. Okay, thank you for that.
Commissioner Obama.
Thank you. My question is, you know, I live in South More Hills. We're very much, very passionate about agritourism out there and doing everything we can to try to preserve that and to try to give our farmers every avenue there is to be able to expand their businesses. Right now, they have, we have like 10, I think, cultivation permits that have been picked up out there. And I think that one of the farmers actually wrote to you, Michelle Castellano-Milanog and Company. She actually reached out to me to ask about bringing this up because they have cultivation already. And buffer-wise, we have none of the buffer requirements that you guys are stating, like schools and housing. All that is pretty much within over 1,000 feet. We want more agritourism. We want more businesses. And there's actually one that's out in the Indian Country. It's Mountain Source Dispensary. It's out in San Isabella. And they have the whole, like, actual place where you can actually go buy the cannabis products, but also have the full, they have the full location of what that's there. And people can go, like, say, you can't just walk into those places, but you can do it by, like, you know, you can, yeah, by a tour, which that's also allowed in our area. We have farm tours already allowed in our area. We have agricultural sales already allowed in our area, and we have cannabis already allowed to be grown. So could we consider possibly adding that area of our city in the allowable areas for cannabis sales? What do you think?
So thank you for your comments. And we, staff, you know, is supportive of the agritourism components of trying to preserve South More Hills' character. That being said, the district doesn't lend itself well to commercial retail uses. And so the staff focused their energies on finding sites, finding districts that do promote, are more conducive to storefront retail type of use. So we wouldn't want to send folks out to the ag district to go to a 7-Eleven, as an example. So this is akin to a 7-Eleven in that it's a storefront retail use. Now, your thought is not lost, your comments are not lost on, you know, a business which we have no operational cultivators by, at this point.
Not right now.
We have 12 licenses that have been issued. Two of them have been abandoned. We have two available, 10 are held by license holders, but none of them are operational. So in the future, perhaps, that's something that can be expanded where if you have an operational cultivation facility, maybe there's an opportunity for some sort of retail component there. But that, we're not there yet, and we're not talking about that tonight. What we're talking about tonight are storefront dispensaries.
But we are, but we have talked about, and this is not going to come up for until next year, our South More Hills Community Plan, but part of that is agritourism tier two. And that tier-two level would support something like this, like actually a sales component with a cafe there. Like, that's what they have at this Indian Reservation. They actually have a cafe. You can go shop. You can go see, take a tour of the cannabis facility. This is all in Oceanside. It's kind of a cool thing, again, to kind of tout our agricultural area out there to kind of add that into the actual allowable areas. I mean, yes, it's not right there now, but it will be hopefully next when we actually adopt the South More Hills Community Plan and we actually add in, hopefully, agritourism tier two, then it would.
So maybe that's a good, appropriate time to bring up that discussion.
Okay. But then if you only have four and they're all taken, then what's going to happen?
Four is a temporary number, perhaps.
Okay.
And maybe.
I hate to close the door on it.
Maybe that takes on a different field than the type of storefronts that we're trying to promulgate with the direction given by council with the proposed text amendments in front of you tonight.
Traditional, like, storefronts they have now, which is really commercial. You're right.
That's correct.
But, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, the one I saw out in San Isabella is pretty cool.
Sounds pretty cool.
It's very cool, and it would fit in our whole little, you know, game plan out there in South More Hills. So I'm just.
I guess in the parlance of our times, it would be a hybrid operation.
A hybrid operation.
Very well.
Anyway, that's it. Just the idea, just keep that in your head, keep it in your hat. Like, we're not going to throw that out. And when we do come back for the South More Hills Community Plan in, hopefully, soon, a few more months, then let's bring that back in. Okay?
We certainly can discuss that at the appropriate time.
Right. Thanks, Sergio. Thanks, Dane.
It would be another zoning issue, right? It would not be a CUP issue. It'd be a zoning issue for that to occur out there.
The zoning to.
A change to the zoning, yeah.
The zoning to permit that type of more retail component to a cultivation use, which is already included in the agricultural district.
Right, we already have.
Are there any other questions? If there are none, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Chair. Looks like we have two speakers this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Thank you.
Okay. Please come forward in the order your name appears on the screen. State your name clearly for the chamber recording as well as the gallery, please. And you will have three minutes to speak. So Chuck Lowry, you're up first, and then followed by Kelly Hayes, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Chuck Lowry, a former city council member, and I was also the chair of the Oceanside Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee in 2017, where we burned six months of our time, staff money, staff hours, trying to make sure we could do legitimate, straightforward regulations for cannabis. And we have the opportunity to do that right now. Staff has done a great job of putting this program together. And I think it's time that we consider one item. I'm very concerned about which is, Commissioner Ogden mentioned it, that requiring an applicant to identify a property when there are very few properties that meet within the space that we have to have, the distance, the buffer. There are very few properties in the first place, but to ask a business to lease a property for some unknown number of months, six months, 12 months, 18 months, and then they still might be denied the application. So we're expecting people to move forward with wisdom, but we've made it so that they have to guess. So it's not a good idea for that to be the case. We can still use all the CUP requirements that are in place. All of the other identification of who the qualified applicants are are still in place. The only thing that would change is the removal of having a location prior to getting a permit. So I think that's the only concern I have. The rest of it's fine. We can work out all those details with the CUP application, and the process takes a lot of time. I can tell you, it's unbelievable. Also, another thing that happened during the time of the Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee was potential applicants were trying to line up properties. And they were asking me, like, "Do you know of anything?" I don't know of anything. And we would look at the maps to see where the locations are that fit in. We came up with three locations within the parameters in 2017 that would fit for the requirements that we, as the City of Oceanside, had for a dispensary. So three locations, and we're putting that, it might be more now. But if we're putting that onto people to guess what they can do, I can't even imagine spending $10,000 a month for 12 months and maybe just be told that you just blew the money down the drain. So I hope you'll consider that. We are really close to getting this project done right now. And with staff's help on this and your approval of simplifying just that one point, that will help us move forward in a thoughtful way that respects all the needs of the community and the needs of our government here. So thank you for the time, and please send forward to the council that we want them to pay attention to that one element, remove property, maintain the property requirements after they've already been approved, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Hayes. I'm a cannabis attorney, and I've been working with these businesses since 2014. I'd like to commend the City of Oceanside for how far you've come. I remember when you couldn't even get into this room to discuss the city's first passing of the ordinance. So thank you for all the work that you have done. Thank you to the city staff as well. I represent cannabis licensees in your city. I'm here to ask that you consider the scoring criteria and add extra points to any licensed cultivators in the City of Oceanside who might want to apply for these retail licenses. There are 10 cultivation licenses, yet none of them are operational. And I can tell you why they're not operational. They're not operational because of the costs it takes to get this business started, the location requirements, and all of the things that have been echoed by the Planning Commission members, as well as the person who spoke before me. If you let these cultivators operate retail, they'll be able to open sooner, and it will allow them to have a more financial viable situation for their business. Second, I would also ask that you reconsider removing the 1,000-foot barrier from bars, liquor stores, and tobacco establishments. I work in a lot of jurisdictions all over California. I've yet to see one like that. So I'm a little shocked and surprised to see that that is a sensitive use. Residential uses, I would request that you lower that to maybe 500 feet, 200 feet. Other jurisdictions do have that. I know the City of Vista is 100 feet. Also, to answer your question as to the sales tax, the county of San Diego is 2%, and they are prepared to begin issuing licenses next year. The City of San Diego just raised their tax to 10%, which is going to significantly impact the City of San Diego's retailers already. So thank you for everything that you're doing, and have a good night.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to come forward.
Okay, bringing it back to the commission. Commissioner Obama.
I was just commenting on Kelly Hayes' presentation, also Chuck Lowry's. Both have great points, and I think that I agree with all of them, actually. So I would like to add that into our motion to the city council to consider all of that. I think it's, they're all very intelligently, you know, it's true. The cannabis, the cultivators out there can't. cultivators out there can't go forward. It's not working. So giving them extra points or giving them some way to be able to get in there and maybe do some kind of a retail operation would be maybe a way to start up cultivating in Oceanside. It's just too hard with the black market. So I'm into that one for sure. And then also the buffers being reduced for bars, tobacco shops, wow, that's kind of crazy. And the idea with the residential, maybe that can be a little bit less than 1,000, I think is what it is now. And then the idea of, like, not having to find a location until you have to get, that's, I mean, if that can be all done, those are actually good comments. Anyway, that's just my banter.
Commissioner Rosales.
Yeah, no, I, I think all of you are on to that. So if, if, if a motion could be made at some point to forward these ideas that have been expressed to the city council for consideration, they're good ideas. They're, they're moderate adjustments, I think, that would make an applicant possibly more successful in getting, getting moving. So I'll make a motion, or I'll let somebody else, but I think that should be included, if that's possible.
If you may allow me to provide a, a little clarification on, on the comments made tonight, and then the comments from the planning commission. So all the comments we heard from the public are related to the evaluation criteria, which is not before you tonight. What's before you tonight are amendments to the zoning ordinance and the city code that address introducing definitions for retail licenses, retail like storefront retail licenses, zoning districts in which they could be allowed in. None of it has to do with the evaluation criteria that were described with regard to not having a site selected as part of the application process and/or allowing additional licenses to cultivators, as an example, or to give local, to give preference to local license holders. Local preference has been granted to the, to existing operators. That's why we ended up with four licenses instead of two. And so that's the direction that's been provided by council. If it's the desire of the planning commission for us to articulate recommendations on the evaluation criteria, we're happy to do that. Though that's not what's being evaluated tonight. What we'd ask you to do is weigh in on the proposed zoning text amendments, and if there's any changes or recommendations on that, to, to maybe voice those separately from those related to the evaluation criteria. And staff will do their best to summarize the comments received from the planning commission on the evaluation criteria and present that to them when we take the entire package forward to them.
That, that would work for me, anyway. Just, just to add, like you say, articulate what you heard here tonight, understanding that we're being asked to push forward something entirely different, but...
That's correct.
I, I understand what you're saying, but the only question that I have is the points that were made about the proximity to other businesses and other things. Is that part of the zoning, or is that part of the evaluation criteria for somebody to get a conditional use permit? So that, are we talking still two separate issues? Are we now kind of blending the two?
I thank you for that question. I'd be happy to provide some clarification, Vice Chair Malik. So in the context of the comments we heard tonight, they have to do with the evaluation criteria. However, there is a, a portion of it that does bleed into the zoning ordinance, and that's the, the regulation, or that's not the right term, the separation of regulated uses. So one of the commenters spoke about liquor stores, bars, and those kinds of things. Those are other regulated uses, which staff has recommended to the council, and council has given direction that that's what they want to follow, is to separate those and make, and I'll ask Dane for clarification here, to those points, an application with a, a site that's identified and within 1,000 feet of another regulated use are going to lose points on that aspect of the application because it's near another regulated use. What we don't want is a cannabis dispensary adjacent to a bar or a liquor store, as an example.
I don't, yeah, I'm not necessarily following the challenge that we have with that, but that doesn't really make a lot of sense to me in terms of that.
Well, so what you're saying is that when they score and they get inside that 1,000, they, so it is addressed at that time.
You're penalizing somebody based on a proximity to another location with, with so little area for them to operate in to begin with. So you're, you're further restricting the opportunity for someone to open another business.
Right.
And that's why we've expanded from our initial recommendation to council to, from certain commercial zoning, certain commercial and zoning, let me rephrase that. That's why we've expanded the districts in which we're proposing these, these facilities could be located in. So initially, we had very limited commercial zones where they could be located in, and in the industrial districts. We expanded those commercial districts to generally include all commercial districts within the city outside of the coastal zone. It's going to be a very, very much a challenge to find a suitable location for these, these storefronts.
Especially when you exclude the coastal zone, absolutely. Yeah, there's no question about that. You're definitely limiting that. Okay.
So I, I'm confused a little bit. So you're, you're saying we can't really say any of the stuff that we brought up, then we're not supposed to be able to actually add that into our motion? But, because right here, isn't attachment seven part of our deal? And it just says right here, the regulated sensitive uses are bars and liquor stores, tobacco, 1,000 feet. Is that, is that part of our deal tonight, then? I guess it isn't. It's, it's like, here it says, you know, one of our things we're looking at.
Maybe it was put in as a reference.
Oh, is that all it is? It's just a reference, Dane?
Yeah, just for reference.
Okay, sorry.
Is that put in as a reference?
So we really have nothing, so all we're really voting for is just what you guys wrote in these revisions of these zoning codes? If there's anything in there that we don't believe?
Exactly. The only other thing we could potentially do would be to recommend approval with a caveat that the ordinance be revisited to, to, to take a look at those proximities of other businesses.
That would be part of the evaluation criteria, not part of the zoning text amendment before you tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogden.
Sergio, I hear maybe what you say is that we should have made these issues before the city council when they came up before the city council. Is that correct, in terms of restrictions, et cetera, that we brought up? Is that right?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ogden, I didn't understand your question.
In other words, what we're trying to do here maybe isn't within our purview to do that. Is that correct? And maybe if we wanted to do it, it should have been at the city council when this was discussed and on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did not bring the evaluation criteria to this body. That's in the purview of the city council. We've worked with our consultant to come up with that criteria for four months, five months. And, and that's, not that that ship has sailed, but that's not what we're asking the planning commission to provide recommendation on tonight.
Yeah, we're not talk, that's not within our purview tonight to discuss.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
However, if the planning commission wanted to articulate those recommendations, it's outside of the zoning text amendments and the city code amendments in front of you tonight.
Well, I, I still get back to that one issue of site selection. And you're going to eliminate a lot of people. It's very, very expensive to do that. And I'm just concerned that then the big people are going to be the ones that have got a significant advantage, and I don't think that's right. That's just me. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosales.
Yeah, no, I'll just, you actually said it already. So we've articulated what we feel about it. It's not part of what we're going to make a motion on tonight. That being said, you did indicate that you, you pass along our, our thoughts, so, and the message should generally be, let's not make it overly restrictive. Let's encourage folks and businesses to start up. And maybe that comes in the next round of evaluation by the city council, you know, with this as a starting point. And we were making progress, and you heard from a couple of speakers, we're doing well. But we also heard there's some areas that maybe are a little restrictive or limit who can participate in tonight, or eventually, we'd like to see that go away and ease up a bit.
Certainly. So what, what we can do is likely the draft resolution that's been attached to the staff report tonight will have to be modified to include a couple of different recitals that expresses the, that includes the concerns and comments expressed by the planning commission. We do that fairly often, so we just have to ask Chair Morrissey to come in on a different day to sign that resolution if, if the planning commission so intends to make that, those comments.
He'd be happy to do that.
He would, he'd be happy to do that.
Well, with that said, do I have a motion? Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's voted.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I see nothing on, for discussion items or miscellaneous actions, so we go to city planners, commissioner reports. So actually, I'll go first. There is a light, and I don't have the address on, it's in the area of, on South Pacific, there's a light. While the other guys are going, I think I took a picture of the address, but there's a streetlight that's out, and the lamp is gone, and there's just wires, but I'll get the address, but I'll give that to you after everybody goes around. So Vice Chair Malik.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Rosales.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Obama.
Well, I would like to maybe have Sergio report on what happened at the city council meeting, this last one that they had, because you could probably, you were there. I was just, I'm, I'm listening to other people's comments, so I might not say it correctly like you would. But we had a city council meeting where it was supposed to just be a basic general plan and climate action plan, kind of like moving it forward thing. And we had a lot of people that came there that were all talking about Southmore Hills and getting rid of clustered housing. So it turned into that more than anything else, and so it kind of got a little messy and, and kind of, anyway, so maybe I'll let Sergio tell you about that.
I'll do my best, planning commissioners, to give you a 45-second or so recap. So on March 19th, the, the city council had a workshop on the status of the general plan. So staff took the opportunity to give the background and history of the efforts to date to get the general plan, the draft of the general plan update to where it's at today. At that meeting, staff gave a comprehensive background on not only the general plan update to the elements themselves, but also on the smart and sustainable corridor specific plan, which is associated with the general plan update, and the climate action plan. After our presentation, there was host of public testimony, about 36 or 37 speakers, and then the planning, the city council opined on the comments that they heard. Some of the overarching comments, as is typical with any general plan update efforts, is the focus on the Southmore Hills Community Plan. And so there was a motion to stop all work on the community plan itself, and then finally the motion came back to, as, preclude any further examination of clustered housing associated with the Southmore Hills Community Plan. So it's been a, a challenge to work on the Southmore Hills Community Plan. That's why we ceased efforts about three years ago now, until the general plan update was further along and completed and adopted, and then we would pick up that effort. So we're still planning on picking up the effort, seemingly now with council direction that will preclude any inclusion of potential clustered housing type projects in the Southmore Hills area.
Commissioner Dodd's?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Anthony?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Ogden?
As my role in downtown advisory committee, I have been out talking specifically to a lot of restaurant owners in the City of Oceanside, and unbelievable excitement about what's happening in the city and what, how far they've come. And I even hear that outside of the city when I'm in San Diego, or I'm even in Encinitas, about how well Oceanside is doing. But it really, I think, the, the restaurant community is extremely excited about what's happening here. Obviously, what's been done with the hotels and what the city has done, the infrastructure that's been put in place, has really put Oceanside on the map. And it's going to, the next five years are going to be very, very exciting as well. So, that's it.
Thank you. So, city planner, before you go, it's, the address for that streetlight that's out, it's 1939 South Pacific Street. If you go to that location, look up, you'll see that lamp's missing.
That's right by your house.
It's like on the corner of your property.
And your, and your point, Vice Chair Malik?
No point needed.
Okay, tough crowd here. City planner saw yours.
Thank you, planning commissioners, for the opportunity to give you an update on upcoming planning commission and city council items. So starting with the planning commission, at our next scheduled meeting on April 14th, we're bringing forward a development plan and a regular coastal permit to add two units in existing development located at 1626 Broadway. At that same meeting, we plan to bring forward a zone amendment to update Article 46 to allow city council to consider the entire record when considering an appeal. That was a city council item back on March 12th. We got direction to allow them, right now, the way the code is written, it's, their, their consideration of appeals limited to the points brought up and the appeal petition itself. And the city council provided us direction to allow them to update, for, for staff to update Article 46 to allow all project materials to be part of the discussion and consideration. So we'll be bringing that forward, hopefully, on April 14th. On April 28th, we have tentatively scheduled a project that includes a tentative map, a development plan, and a density bonus for a 36-unit detached single-family home subdivision project at 1501 Kelly Street. It's in the Fire Mountains neighborhood. On May 5th, we, oh, and at that April 28th meeting, they'll also be bringing forward a regular coastal permit for renovations to a single-family home at 61 St. Malo Street. Moving on to May 5th, we'll be bringing forward, we have tentatively scheduled a, to bring forward a regular coastal permit for exterior improvements at 1840 South Pacific Street. So that covers us up to the first meeting in May. Moving on to city council, going back to the March 12th meeting, I just discussed, there was a council item to give direction to staff to bring forward updates to Article 46. On March 19th, there was a general plan workshop, which I gave you a brief overview about. Moving on to this Wednesday, March 26th, we will be taking forward an item where we give the city council an update on the annual progress report that staff prepares for the Department of Housing and Community Development, where we shared progress made in 2024 on meeting the city's regional housing needs assessment obligations. On April 23rd, beginning of a series of appeal hearings, on April 23rd, there will be an appeal hearing, number two, actually, the second hearing on a project that this body approved at 503 Vista Bella. On May 7th, we'll be taking forward an appeal on the Olive Park 100% Affordable Housing Project.
What date is that?
That is April 7th. I'm sorry, May 7th, May 7th. And then finally, we have scheduled on May 21st, the appeal of the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project that this body approved unanimously. That concludes my update to the planning commission.
Hey, go ahead.
I have a question. Is that the, the new or revised appeal process that's going to happen now with you, is that better for staff? Is it easier for you guys to do it? Because now you don't have to kind of make it different than what it was when you presented to us? Or is it harder or easier? Is it more work? I just wondered.
Thank you for the question. So the initial assessment is that we would just simply, as we currently do, attach the planning commission report and all the attachments to the record. Now, the, the city council will just have the ability to consider other items not brought up on the appeal. So as an example, if traffic wasn't mentioned in an appeal, then people come to the hearing and discuss traffic concerns, then that's something that perhaps the planning commission might, might, might influence their, their decision on the appeal being requested.
Sergio, what was the Bella Vista date?
That is April 23rd.
And, and then the Eddie Jones?
That is May 21st.
Thanks. May 21st.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Then let's adjourn.
Recording stopped.